I'm pleased to welcome committee members and guests to the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs meeting. Everyone should have some form of electronic device, iPad, laptop, or iPhone to access the agenda and other supporting documents for this meeting. There are ten copies over here. If anybody needs a copy of the agenda or any of the documents, we are aspiring to go as paperless as possible at this time. Now, for today's meeting, there are five action items and one information item before the committee. The first action item is approval of meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of February 3rd?
I so moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Our second item is approval of the Brooklyn College Student Activity Fee reearmarking an increase, College of Liberal Arts and Sciences Day Session. Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez will now provide an overview of the student activity fee and reearmarking.
Great, thank you, Chairperson Morales-Fernando. So, this student activities fee schedule represents a reearmarking of twenty-five cents of the student government fee from an inactive publication, which was called, I think it's Haticba, Haticba, to a student-produced literary magazine, Stuck in the Library, and an increase of twenty cents in the student government fee to be earmarked to Stuck in the Library. And that's the name of the new publication. This will provide forty-five cent local.
The name of the publication is?
It's called Stuck in the Mud.
Stuck in the Mud.
Yeah, Brooklyn College's new literary magazine. This will provide forty-five cents of local earmarking for Stuck in the Library to be allocated by student government. There were two referenda that were held in conjunction with the student government elections held April 28th through the 30th of this year. The vote on the reearmarking of the student government fee from Haticba to Stuck in the Library was sixty-eight, six-hundred-and-eighty-one in favor and one-hundred-and-ninety-seven opposed, with an eight percent of the eligible students voting. The vote on the referendum to increase the student activity fee was six-hundred-two in favor and two-hundred-and-eighty-three opposed, with eight percent of the eligible.
Twenty-five cents.
I'm sorry?
Twenty-five cents, I just want to make sure I'm following.
Yes, twenty-five cents. And the college president supports both of the referendum.
Great. And I understand that Vice President Milga Morales is here to take any further questions or clarification from members of the committee?
Surely.
Any questions?
Yeah, is, um, how is this increase going to be seen? I mean, is this, are there any issues with this?
Please join us.
Sure. So, I think the students, in fact, demonstrated through their vote that they are definitely interested in having this publication being funded through the referendum process. We did receive an appeal, the president did, because of the number of abstentions. There were a number of abstentions. The way that it was addressed is that abstentions can either be pro or against, when we were not sure. And so, even with that, I think the president felt very comfortable that enough people voted in favor of it, and that the students actually did actualize their point of view through the vote.
Well, sometimes, I mean, when you have an abstention, you know, it could be that individuals maybe, I mean, it's another way of protesting. It could also be that people just don't want to give support for it, and maybe they need to be educated more on the benefits. Will there be a process to talk to them more about the benefits and educate them?
The benefits of the magazine?
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely. One of the things that the president has requested is that there be a faculty advisor to make sure that any funding that comes to the magazine is used wisely. And I think in that process, we will definitely have a monitoring of the magazine and make sure that we actually publish it, not only that they publish, but also that the students on campus really know about the magazine. And I think the fact that it's called Stuck in the Library already is something that, you know, has already garnered attention and will garner more attention.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
I have a question.
Yes.
If you include the number of abstentions, what would be the percentage be, or how many students abstained?
I think we had about six-hundred abstentions. I'll look at it carefully. So, I'm sorry, four-hundred abstentions, so we had six-hundred, six-hundred-and-two, yes, two-hundred-and-eighty-three, no, and four-hundred-and-two abstentions.
Total to like thirty-two percent abstained?
Aye, yes, thirty-one percent, thirty-one point two percent.
Just such a high number of abstentions.
Yeah, I mean, we would have loved for that not to have been the case, but that is the case here. And in the past, we've gotten, we've put forward referenda that have been close in terms of the vote, let's say seven-hundred to seven-hundred, seven-hundred-and-one to less than six-hundred. But we have moved them forward because I think in the end, the students have voted yes in the majority, and that's, we've been pretty consistent with that.
Okay.
That we've followed through on the majority vote. Yes.
How long has the former student publication been extinct or defunct?
Approximately over two years.
Over two years.
Yeah.
So, it's not, there's no movement to revitalize that?
They could always revitalize. They could come back, and just like the students took advantage of this process to actually take funds from something that was not active, they could come back and do the same thing. So, the students have the options to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I have a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Now that we're talking about abstentions, I want to make sure.
You didn't vote.
No, yeah, I can't, so.
Oh, okay.
I think the motion is approved. I want to welcome our new chancellor, Chancellor Melik, and thank you for joining us today. And also, I wanted to extend our greetings also to our chairperson, Benno Schmidt, for joining us today also. Our next action item is approval of the New York City College of Technology Establishment of Summer Session Student Activity Fee. Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez is now going to provide an overview of the proposed Summer Session Student Activity Fee.
Sure, great, thank you. So, the New York City College of Technology is now the only senior college that does not have a summer session student activity fee. In order to provide student activities for the growing summer session population, a summer session student activity fee has been established. The college president supports this fee increase, and the student activity fee at the college was last increased in nineteen ninety-eight. A referendum was held in accordance with the university bylaw section sixteen twelve in conjunction with the student government elections held April 28th through April 30th this year. The vote on the referendum was five-hundred-and-fifty in favor and one-hundred-and-nineteen opposed, with four percent of the eligible student voting on the referendum. Of the students who voted, eighty-two percent voted to support this fee.
And today, we have President Russell Holster here to take any further questions or clarifications. Is he here? No, I don't think he is here.
Their representative from City Tech here.
Their representative here? I just want to know why we haven't had the fee in place since nineteen ninety-eight?
Roberto, would you like to comment?
Yeah, I can respond. It's, um, you know.
Roberta Nord's from our office of student activities. She works with the college as a close friend of his referendum.
Thank you for joining us.
Sure. Our summer enrollment population, you know, population has been increasing, and students want more services during the summer session. So, it was just a matter, it just never happens until now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Another question, is the fee in the summer going to be equivalent to the fee in the during?
No, it's lower.
It's lower?
It's significantly lower.
That's typical with the Boston College.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved. Our next item is approval of the Queens College Student Activity Fee Increase for Shuttle Bus Service. Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez will now provide an overview of the proposed student activity fee shuttle bus service.
Great, so, the above schedules for the fall and spring semesters represent an increase of forty dollars for the shuttle bus service that will be allocated by the College Association of Queens College. This will establish a shuttle bus service for Queens College students from the subway, its Main Street flushing, and the Long Island Railroad Jamaica Station to the Queens College campus, making two stops on campus, one on Casino Boulevard near the Student Union and another on Main Street at Queens Hall. Queens College is extremely difficult to reach via public transportation. Commuting to the campus from these transit points adds an additional forty-five minutes to students commuting to campus. The shuttle bus will cut the average student commute in half by eliminating all the stops on the public bus route and taking more direct route to campus. This will be particularly welcome during the cold winters and hot summer months. The shuttle will operate every fifteen minutes between the hours of seven a.m. and eleven p.m. The shuttle bus will entice more students to consider attending Queens College, particularly those from throughout the city and Long Island, and will improve retention and student satisfaction. Faculty and staff who wish to avail themselves of this shuttle bus will be charged forty dollars per semester, and the college president strongly supports this initiative.
Terrific. And I understand interim President Jesus is here today to answer any questions, and Vice President Adam Rockman as well. Please join us.
Well, I guess you need to have a motion to approve before this discussion, right?
Are there any questions for them at this time?
Yes, I have a question. So, it's going to stretch to the Main Street subway line, and will it also go to the Jamaica Junction?
There would be two lines.
Yes.
Two of them. One are from the Jamaica Station, so there would be the Long Island Railroad Station and also the independent trains. And the other line would be to Number Seven, and also is the Long Island Railroad Port Washington Line stops.
And what type of security will we have, for example, at the Jamaica Station, so that way, individuals who are not Queens College students wouldn't be using that? How will that be verified?
Students will have to show their Queens College student ID card.
And for the faculty and staff, we're going to issue an ID appropriate for this purpose, a pass, you know.
And why didn't you have this in place in nineteen seventy-three?
Yes. It's a very good question.
I wasn't here. Any other questions?
Sure. What kind of buses are they ADA compliant? That's two questions.
I think there will be school buses.
School buses?
Yes. However, we'll make sure that adults can sit comfortably.
Yeah. And so, if somebody comes up with a wheelchair?
Pardon me?
If somebody rolls up with a wheelchair, how will that be handled?
Well, we already have a service. We already have a service, it's supported by student fees, and we have, so it's independent of this.
Okay, thank you.
A separate service for?
Yeah, it exists now.
For ADA?
It exists now, of course.
Terrific. Any other questions?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I have a few questions. What would, is the sole mission for that is just to reduce the time? Time-saving of students, or are there other missions with the shuttle bus?
The mission is to reduce the time and make the service more frequent, especially during the winter months, when with an expectation that there will be snow, some of the bus lines there started becoming very frequent.
I don't believe you.
So, this was the main reason that we introduced that. We hope that in addition to improving the transportation, there might be some other benefits that they will, our college will be a little more attractive as a location. I do have a map that you can see our problem, you know, if you see the transportation lines there, and Queens College is located away from all the main transportation lines. So, I hope that there will be a side benefit in addition to that.
And they'll get to class on time.
Yes, yes.
So, my next question would be, would, let's just say, if this program is successful, would college take the burden in future, reducing the fees, or it will continue beyond this?
After the first, we need at least two semesters before we're able, will be able to evaluate if the program is successfully successful. And we evaluate it on the basis of the number of students who are using it, and also if our bus service, the shuttle bus service, is available the difficult days of the winter. At the end of these two semesters, there will be an evaluation, and I hope that the college will be able to find other ways to subsidize this service.
I just have one question. In terms of publicizing it, do you have a plan in terms of publicizing? And then my other question is, is there a possibility that it would be too popular in terms of being able to handle the need?
Yes. Let me answer your questions in the order that came. Need to publicize. Well, I think that one way or the other, this resolution, this initiative has been publicized significantly among our existing students, you know. And we'll make sure that our new students, you know, will come, will know about the project. If it becomes more popular than we think, then we tend to increase the service. In the contract, in the RFP, we'll have this provision, that we, of course, this will increase the expense of the first semester, and then we'll make sure how we'll find the funding for the second semester. I hope that this will be the situation, that's what we'll face.
Good, well, I'm glad that you're going to be addressing that in the RFP process.
Yes.
Having it run every fifteen minutes was what you said? That's going to be good, because that will alleviate some issues, because then people know that within fifteen minutes, even up to eleven o'clock at night, that they can expect other transport to come. So, I think that will help us.
I'm glad that you mentioned the night. In the college, it appears that, especially in the winter, after seven o'clock, faculty, staff, and students who don't drive, who use, they are always aware if the, how frequent the bus will be, how it will come, and this will provide some more, let us say, pleasant expectation that the bus will come and it will stop by the college, you know, and they won't have to cross Casino Boulevard, you know, a busy boulevard to go to the bus stop.
I think it's really good, especially at night, because the regular New York City transport, they will probably run every twenty to twenty-five minutes at night, you know, so with this being every fifteen minutes, especially in the winter, when it's really very difficult, and at night, it's going to ease individuals who come to the college from Brooklyn and also from Long Island. So, I think it's going to provide, another benefit I would see is that it's going to increase that access.
I agree. Thank you, President and Vice President.
Thank you very much. Great idea. I think we have to vote on it. I think we.
But it's not retroactive to nineteen seventy-three.
Yeah.
May I have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved. Our next item is approval of the City University of New York Medical Amnesty Good Samaritan Policy. Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez will now provide an overview of the proposed CUNY Medical Amnesty Good Samaritan Policy.
Right. So, the City University of New York's Medical Amnesty Good Samaritan Policy is intended to encourage students to seek medical assistance related to drug or alcohol use without the fear of being disciplined solely for such use. Because the use of these substances may be life-threatening, CUNY wishes to reduce barriers to students seeking and receiving medical help in those situations. This policy is intended to complement New York State's Good Samaritan law, which is designed to encourage students to call nine-one-one in the event of an alcohol or drug-related emergency by shielding from arrest or prosecution for drug possession or underage alcohol use for those persons who witness or suffer from a medical emergency involving drugs or alcohol.
And Senior Vice Chancellor Schaefer is also here to take any questions for clarification on the proposed policy. Any questions on the policy?
I'm certainly in favor of this. I'm just curious, teaching at CUNY, I'm not aware of high levels of drug use, or maybe I should be, but I'm not aware of that at all for alcohol use. It's a very sober institution for my part of view. Do you have data on the levels of drug and alcohol use or misuse?
We don't have data across the university. However, we do know on many of our residential campuses nationally, this policy is pretty standard, and now at the university, we have about thirty-one hundred students in housing, and this, it's just a standard policy we need to have in place to protect all of our students, but in particular, our students living in housing.
Thank you. Questions or anything to add to that? No? Great.
I'll move it.
May I have a motion to approve? Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved. And unless we have an information item, we have the vice chancellor's report. Frank Sanchez will now address the committee.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, a number of items since our last meeting, but the university, to start off, the university continues to benefit from our Single Stop USA initiative, which, as many of you know, serves our poorest students by connecting them with public benefits. Since 2010, Single Stop USA and its partners have allocated now over a hundred-and-twenty-nine million dollars in benefits, tax-free funds, and supportive services to over forty-six thousand students and family members here at CUNY. Just this year alone, we allocated about thirty-six million dollars through this program. It's really just among our community colleges. It's really been a tremendous program for our students. The Office of the Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs and the CUNY Blackmail Initiative hosted a panel discussion on college and career readiness and success. The event took place on May thirteenth at the Roosevelt House at Hunter College. The Office of Student Affairs is currently hosting a Hubert Humphrey and Fulbright Fellow, Ali Zaman Shah from Pakistan. Mr. Shah is working with the student activities directors across the university to develop student engagement and leadership development goals, and evaluate trends, initiatives, and challenges at individual campuses. LaGuardia Community College was presented with the New York Blood Center Vice Chancellor's Cup for the most blood donations as part of the CUNY Blood Drive Campaign for 2012-2013 academic year. Once again, this year, we hit record enrollments, bringing in just over five thousand blood donations over the course of the year, one of the largest providers of blood in the city of New York. The Central Office of Student Affairs recently launched the CUNY Foster Care Collaborative. This collaborative is, we have brought together city agencies, community-based organizations, non-for-profits, and foundations to help us look at providing greater support for our students in foster care and who are orphans. We estimate that across CUNY, we have about a thousand students that are orphans or wards of the court. National studies show that their graduation rate ranges from about three percent to eleven percent, very, very low graduation rates. And so, through this collective, we're bringing together many organizations that do this work with students in foster care in the hopes of providing better success and graduation rates here at CUNY. Plans are underway for the fiftieth anniversary of college discovery, which will be held in the fall of 2014. CUNY TV has been commissioned to do a commemorative video highlighting this program. Last month, over twelve-hundred high school students, along with CUNY student leaders and athletes, participated in the annual CUNY Mets Day at City Field. This is a college fair where we invite over twenty different colleges in the region to present to high school students from around the city, and at the same time, the students get to take in a baseball game. And this year, the weather was very nice for that event. Along the lines of CUNY Athletics, we had our conference basketball championships, which were broadcasted live via ESPN3 for the first time. York College defeated College of Staten Island to capture the men's championship, and Baruch College defeated Hunter College to win the women's championship. Congratulations to the College of Staten Island, Iona Staiko, and Baruch Stephen Conigliio, and Bronx Community College duo of O'Shea Miller and Katarina Arena for being selected the 2014 recipients of the CUNYAC Scholar Athletes of the Year. The awards dinner was held May fifteenth at John Jay College. Also, congratulations to the Baruch Men's Tennis and College of Staten Island Softball for winning the CUNY Championships and advancing to the NCAA tournament. Other championship winners include Kingsborough and Community College Baseball, and CCNY Men's and Hunter Women's in outdoor track and field. The annual International Students Academic Excellence Awards Ceremony took place May first at John Jay College. This is where we had over a hundred-and-fifty international students who had a four-point-oh this past year, and we, this is our second year in recognizing them of their academic accomplishments. April was CUNY Disability Awareness Month, where we had numerous events across the system. Disability Awareness Month concluded with Fifth Annual CUNY Access Conference at John Jay College on April 25th. At this conference, I also presented the Matthew Goldstein Scholarship to five outstanding CUNY students with disabilities. These students will have their full financial needs met through these scholarships for the 2014-15 academic year. The purpose of the Goldstein Scholarship is to support the persistence and graduation of CUNY students who must take reduced course loads as reasonable accommodations for their disabilities. Following the recent White House announcement in regards to addressing sexual misconduct on college campuses, and President Obama's specific mention of the role of college presidents in this important effort, the Office of Student Affairs has partnered with the Office of Legal Affairs and the Office of Recruitment and Diversity to host several Title IX trainings across the university with key constituents, including public safety, Title IX coordinators, and chief student affairs officers, specifically highlighting the new protocol requiring their coordination efforts on campuses. There were other recent trainings of student leaders, regarding Title IX compliance, including the University Student Senate and resident assistants in our housing operations. The importance of continued training of student leaders, including peer mentors, has been emphasized, and other student leaders. A joint memo from myself and Senior Vice Chancellor Schaefer on faculty-student disciplinary committees was sent out to the college presidents and deans of professional schools. The memo outlined steps that the colleges need to take in providing timely training of committee members and to ensure that a full constituted faculty-student discipline committee is in place on every campus by the beginning of each fall semester. Finally, the Office of Special Programs is proud to announce that this year's valedictorian at York was a CIC student, chemistry major, Katarina Hud, and also at City College, the salutatorian this year was a Student Support Services student from Trio, Simone Gordon. She's a teacher education major, who has also recently won a Fulbright Fellowship. Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I have two quick questions, one more of a comment. You mentioned the foster care population in terms of our student body. That's a number that I've never heard before, so I think it would be useful for us to keep that as a recurring agenda item to see how that report progresses and how this committee can be of further help with that.
Absolutely. Our initial launch meeting, we had great participation from across the city, and since then, we've, there's a number of other individuals, including foundations, that want to get involved with this initiative. The thousand figures, actually nine-hundred-and-eighty-one, that are categorized as orphans or wards of the court, does not include all of our students that are in and out of foster care, and so, that number certainly would grow quite a bit if you include all students in foster care.
And my guess is the number's probably even a little higher for people who may have yourself reporting. That's just my instinct.
Agreed.
You had mentioned the wonderful Title IX collaboration, and I just have one question, having been following the issue rather closely. I'm wondering if there's any involvement with NYPD or law enforcement, because that seems to be a bit of a controversy around the country, whether to include or not to include that type of collaboration at the front end. My suggestion would be that it be included, because it, one way or the other, it ends up becoming some type of a law enforcement concern.
Rick may want to comment on the involvement of our partnerships between NYPD and our own public safety. I know, from the university perspective, though, in terms of the compliance that we need to follow, clearly, our public safety officers were intimately involved. need to follow, clearly, our public safety officers, who are intimately involved with this process, are getting trained fairly extensively with this, with Title IX. But I don't know to what degree our public safety officers are partnering with NYPD on, on training or protocol.
I don't think we are, I mean, we mostly, almost entirely handle things on the campuses, and the NYPD comes in only in the most extreme cases, and we're focused now on training our own people. They're, they're the first line of, of reporting and response on the campus.
Great. May I have a, there's no other questions? May I have a? Oh, please.
Two, two things. One is a request, if I could have a copy of the joint memo on the fact that student disciplinary committees, is that we could send one over? And I have, in terms of the student population, do we collect information on former inmates who enter CUNY as students? Do we have data on that? Reentry issues?
I know some of our campuses have specific programs targeting those.
John Jay.
Yes, as well as some others, but I don't know, the central office, if we've looked, gathered that data.
It's a great question, can we look into that? And I'd love to discuss that at our, at our next meeting, because that, I see.
An important social issue is, is the size of the prisons in New York State wind down, these people have to go places and be educated.
Look into that.
In the same way that veterans may have special needs, and different populations have special needs, we may not be asking, so.
We have a number of programs on our campuses to help this population with reentry, to provide them with educational programs that they may need, and then to help them apply to CUNY. Lehman has one of them.
What the number looks like, yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's look at that, thank you, I like that suggestion very much. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is approved, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and have a great.